Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council Standing Committee's meeting for Wednesday, September 25th, 2019. My name is Kim Clark Baskin and I'm the Deputy City Clerk. With us today, we have our sign language interpreter, Nick Miller. The following is a list of legislation up for preliminary approval by Pittsburgh City Council. Finance and Law Committee, Reverend Burgess is the Chair. Bill Number 2053. Resolution authorizing the Mayor and the Chief Equity Officer to enter into a professional services agreement and/or contract between the City of Pittsburgh and the Government Alliance on Race and Equity in order to receive training and develop a racial equity toolkit in an amount not to exceed $26,235. Bill Number 2054. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in the amount of $6,234.14 in favor of James A. Jordan, excuse me, James A. Gordon Jr. care of Amanda Bonner for damage to his parked vehicle near the intersection of Birchland Street and Bel Air Place from a city Department of Public Works salt truck on January 18th, 2019. Public Works Committee, Councilwoman Kell Smith is the Chair. We have Bill Number 1637. Resolution authorizing the Mayor and the Directors of the Department of Parks and the Department of Public Works to enter into a lease agreement with the Pittsburgh Ballet Theater for a portion of real property located on Liberty Avenue between 29th and 30th Streets. Bill Number 2002. Resolution vacating a portion of Gallatin Street in the 10th Ward, 7th Council District. Bill Number 2056. Resolution providing for the issuance of a warrant in favor of Civil and Environmental Consultants, Inc. in the amount of $18,488.46 in emergency payment for production of the nine-mile-run wetland monitoring report due to the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection in order to comply with the PADEP Permit Number E021367, Department of the Army. Bill Number 2057. Resolution authorizing the Mayor of the City of Pittsburgh and the Department of Public Works to apply for a grant from the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County's Gaming Economic Development Fund for up to $500,000 to provide for the design and construction of a new park building for the Crowley Recreation Center project. And should the grant be awarded, they are authorized to enter into an agreement with RAC. Bill Number 2058. Resolution authorizing the Mayor of the City of Pittsburgh and the Department of Public Works to apply for a grant from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development, Keystone Communities Program, to provide funding for the Highland Park Pedestrian Tunnel and should the grant be awarded by DCED, they are authorized to enter into agreements with DCED. The grant proposal includes an ask of $500,000 with a local match of $682,638.33 to be contributed by the City of Pittsburgh's 2020 capital budget. Bill Number 2060. Resolution authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to execute relevant agreements to receive grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation's Automated Red Light Enforcement Program to replace traffic signals at the intersection of Bigelow Boulevard and Bayard Street in the North Oakland Neighborhood and further providing for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed Bill Number 2061. Resolution authorizing the Mayor of the City of Pittsburgh and the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to enter into an agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development Multi-Modal Transportation Fund Program should the grant be awarded by DCED to provide funding for the Grand View Avenue Project. Land Use and Economic Development Committee, Ms. Gross is the Chair. Bill Number 2027. Resolution authorizing the Mayor of the City of Pittsburgh and the Department of City Planning to apply for a grant from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development's Keystone Communities Program to provide funding for the Sawmill Run Zoning Study and should the grant be awarded by DCED, authorized to enter into an agreement with DCED. The grant proposal includes an ask of $25,000 with a local match of $100,000 to be contributed by the City of Pittsburgh's 2020 capital budget. Bill Number 2055. Resolution authorizing the Mayor of the City of Pittsburgh and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement with community-based organizations for community and economic development, for planning assistance in various neighborhoods in the city, and providing operating support for these groups and providing for the payment cost not to exceed $700,000, and this bill is sponsored by Reverend Ricky Burgess. Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management Committee, Ms. Strasburger is the Chair. Bill Number 2062. Resolution amending Resolution 158 of 2017 entitled "A Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to Enter into an Agreement with Computronics USA, Inc. for the Provision of Permitting and Licensing Package, Total Cost Not to Exceed $1,480,000 Over the Next Two Years." And the Intergovernmental Affairs Committee, Mr. O'Connor is the Chair. We have Bill Number 2029. Resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for the 201 Arsenal Phase II Residential Land Development Project located at 135 39th Street. That concludes the reading of the legislation up for preliminary approval. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Good morning and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council Standing Committee Meeting of Wednesday, September 25th, 2019. Our first order of business is public comment. Members of the public who want to address City Council, please come forward. You'll be given three minutes. The green light means the beginning of three minutes. The yellow light means one minute. To summarize, red light means your time has expired. Please relinquish the podium. I'd like to take this moment to remind everyone, the rules of council state that comment is limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before council, which are or may be before council. Profanity will not be permitted and order will be maintained at all time. First speaker, please.
My name is Les Ludwig. I live at 6589 Rosemore Street in Squirrel Hill. I've been carrying this bar graph about uncollected taxation since probably early When the hell is someone going to pay attention? And you'll say, well, Les, what are you getting so upset over? Well, in this bar graph, which only goes to 2009, a small matter of 49.5% of the population of this great country is not paying any taxes. They're taking a free ride. And guess what that miserable so-called president did? He added $1,000 to the exception, which means that it's even higher now. How are we going to run a country without money? It's called no excuse, sir. You live in this country, you have a responsibility. You didn't get the patriotism of the Second World War without effort. People died for it and all the war since. And think back about it. We thought when we wrote the Charter for the United Nations that, oh, we're going to have peace. Have we had peace? We've had war, constant, endless war. And so I come here at a distinguished age of 87, almost 87, to go ahead and raise the issue again and say to the press, to the newspapers, to the television, when are you going to wake up and pay attention to the fact that these people are not paying anything? They're taking a free ride on the rest of our back. I hope that this will bring some attention. I decided to stop being nice. I'm not going to be nice, I'm going to be disgusting. Maybe you have to do that? Do you have to do that? Do you have to be a Donald Trump? God forbid. To gain some attention for a small problem that both parties are a part of. Thank you.
My name is Javon Brown, I live in the Hill. Citizens, I believe that those men that came out of the gas station and attacked their women, our black women are domestic terrorists. Some of them, there's some that's from another country, but he can come and beat our children, beat our women? Let me tell you something. Ms. Smith ain't here, but I told her that these foreign people disrespect us and the police take their side. She had said something about human relations, calling the Human Relations Commission. I'm telling you this, look, you heard someone call on the radio and said, all those people in that gas station, they have glass in front of them. They are already protected, you understand? They're behind glass. He left from behind the glass, she's running out the store, he comes out and beats her. Her head into the gas pump. I mean, for real. You know, I don't care, Anthony, Anthony is a black man and a lot of things here on KDKA. And to me, a lot of times he says he's black, but he talks in favor of you white people. He does. I heard him one time talking about the homeless people and the teenagers down there. He's down at the downtown and he was saying, yeah, yeah, well, maybe, when he started talking about the kids, he even said, maybe some of them need to be knocked in the head. I called KDKA, but man, Gina won't take my call. He won't take it, but I heard Anthony, and bless you, Anthony, because Anthony said, when they came out and was beating them women, he said there was people standing around. Why didn't nobody help? That's what he said, because he said if I was there, I would have. And you know something, I'm a woman, I'm a small woman, but if they had attacked me, I would have attacked them. My first baby, I lost. A man came and was attacking my sister-in-law. I tried to help her. She ran, but she took a bottle and threw it and hit him in his head. I'm seven months pregnant, I'm running. I go up and I'm on the steps, he comes up, he hits me, all in my stomach. I lost my baby, but I also helped her. He had her, I thought he was going to kill her. Do you understand that you let these foreigners, and I can say it, the China King, I went in here and was fussing one time because of the food. The little one, one ran, but I know in different countries, they don't fight you with your hand, they kick you. And I got ready to leave and he was getting ready to fight me, but I just, I was washing clothes. $25 of quarters I had, and when he went to, I said, come on, I got $25 of quarters and I'm going to beat you down, because they had already beat a black woman one time and she was looking at it out there. Years don't do nothing, the police come and arrest the cops. They arrest the black people. Instead, you better see about these foreigners. You need to send them back home. Trump want them back? I want them ones that jumped on the women. They got to go back. They don't belong in this house, and not me.
Next speaker, please, hopefully without the racism.
Dr. Ronald Miller, Little Italy. Association for the Advancement of Artificial Intelligence, Global Intelligence Society candidate for President 2020. 412-969-7997, Teltext 24/7. Concern of council is not to offer to Pittsburgh and the USA the best information at the highest level of intelligence? Yes? No? Concerns of council are artificial intelligence and GenSec's identity formation, among others. Council Proclamation, 27 July, 2019, signed by all nine district representatives, reads Section 1. More than half a century ago in Pittsburgh, the birthplace of AI, Section 7, quote, "We consider AI to be a branch of computer science that allows computers to make predictions and decisions to solve problems." Individual and institutions in Princeton, New Jersey, United States, Cambridge, Massachusetts, USA, Cambridge, England, UK scoffed at the Pittsburgh AI birthplace claim as misinformation. Dr. Claude Shannon, Princeton University, MIT, Cambridge, Massachusetts, USA, information theorist originator, gave in a mathematical theory of communication in 1948. He offered the 1-0 binary code for digital info processing, which is at the base of all computing still to this day and in AI. At CMU, they offered him an honorary doctorate in 1984. Today, there's Dr. Noam Brown at CMU, NoamB@cs.cmu.edu. Dr. Grace Hopper, Vassar, Harvard, MIT, Cambridge, Massachusetts, USA, artificial info intel linguist. She worked at Harvard on Mark I to the UNIVAC in the early 1950s. She was the inventor of COBOL, the first computer language, 1955 to 59. Alan Turing, he's the giant among all these, Cambridge University. He offered so much. In computing machines and human intelligence, he asked the question, can machines think? And then he offered the Turing, what is now called the Turing Test. That test is based on an identification of a man and a woman by an interrogator and a substitute for the man by a machine, and if the machine answers questions in such a way that the time that is taken to make the identification is the same as for a human person, then Turing's position was and remains among many of those who do this work, that that machine thinks. What's the best information on the birthplace of AI? It's Cambridge's, UK and USA, and not Pittsburgh.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Seeing no other speakers, we will now move into our agenda. We'll start with the roll call, with the clerk, please, call the roll.
Mr. Cocken.
Here.
Mrs. Gross.
Here.
Mrs. Harris.
Here.
President Crowe.
Mr. Lovell.
Mr. O'Connor.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Reverend Burgess. Six members present.
Typically, I'll wait till the end of the meeting to say this, but I will say this now, and then I'll say it quickly and I'll say it again. I have spent my whole life trying to be a person not defined by ethnicity or race. Therefore, I will defend any other person who is trying, who gets characterized by their race or gender or sexual preference. It has no place in our country, it has no place in this council. All right, so that, we'll go to Finance Law Committee, which I am the Chair. We have supplemental paper.
Bill 2078. Resolution authorizing the Mayor to enter into an amendment to a contribution agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Department of Transportation, the County of Allegheny, and the Port Authority of Allegheny County, holding Acquisition Company LP and the Pittsburgh Steelers for the purpose of the city making final payments to the Commonwealth due toward projects related to proposed roadway infrastructure improvements on the city's north shore, and further authorizing the city solicitor to enter into an amended consent order to document any revised obligations consistent with this resolution.
Need a motion to hold for executive session.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. Next bill, please.
Bill 2053. Resolution authorizing the Mayor and the Chief Equity Officer to enter into a professional services agreement between the City and the Government Alliance on Race and Equity in order to receive training and develop a racial equity toolkit in an amount not to exceed $26,235, subject to appropriation.
I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any conversation? No conversation, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. Next bill, please.
Bill 2054. Resolution authorizing issuing of a warrant in the amount of $6,234.14 in favor of James A. Gordon Jr. for damage to his parked vehicle near the intersection of Birchland Street and Bel Air Place from a city DPW salt truck on January 18th, 2019.
Need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any conversation? No conversation, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. Next is invoices. Invoices are on the table. Need a motion for the invoices.
Motion to approve.
Need a second.
Second.
Any questions about the invoices? Conversation. Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. And no interdepartmental transfers, there are P-cards, P-cards on the table. Need a motion for the P-cards.
Motion to approve.
Need a second.
Second.
Any conversation about the P-card? No conversation about the P-card, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. That takes us to the next committee of the day, which is the Public Works Committee. Ms. Kell Smith is the Chair. We have a deferred paper.
Bill 1637. Resolution authorizing the Mayor and Directors of the Department of Parks and Director of the Department of Public Works to enter into a lease agreement with the Pittsburgh Ballet Theater for a portion of real property located on Liberty Avenue between 29th and 30th Streets.
I need a motion, Ms. Smith.
I believe that the, Ms. Gross sent me a text message and that the ballet is working, she's working, that they're working on the agreement with the neighborhood and it's going to, it's going very nicely, but she would like a two-week hold. So a motion to hold for two weeks.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. Next bill, please.
Bill 2002. Resolution vacating a portion of Gatlin Street in the 10th Ward, 7th Council District.
Need a motion, Ms. Smith.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any conversation? No conversation, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
We held this last week for Ms. Gross and I haven't heard about anything from her about it today, so if she's not okay with it, we can recommit it next week, but in the meantime, I suggest you take the week to...
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. All right, we can bring, we can read the next two bills, no, not next, the next, this bill then the next two.
Bill 2056. Resolution providing for the issuing of a warrant in favor of Civil and Environmental Consultants, Inc. in the amount of $18,488.46 in emergency payment for production of the nine-mile-run wetland monitoring report due to the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection in order to comply with the PADEP.
Excuse me, I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any conversation? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. I think we'll do these one time now, I'll look at them. All right, next bill, please.
Bill 2057. Resolution authorizing the Mayor and the Department of Public Works to apply for a grant from the RAAC Gaming Economic Development Fund for up to $500,000 to provide funding for the design and construction of a new park building for the Crowley Recreation Center project, and should the grant be awarded, authorized to enter into an agreement with the RAAC. In the event this grant is awarded, this resolution provides for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $500,000.
Need a motion, Ms. Smith.
At the request of Councilwoman Harris, motion to hold for two weeks for a meeting that they're having tonight and whatever.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. Next bill, please.
Bill 2058. Resolution authorizing the Mayor and the Department of Public Works to apply for a grant fund from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development's Keystone Communities Program to provide funding for the Highland Park Pedestrian Tunnel Project. Should the grant be awarded, we are authorized to enter into an agreement with DCED. The grant proposal includes an ask of $500,000 with a local match of $682,638.33 to be contributed by the City's Pittsburgh, City of Pittsburgh's 2020 capital budget from the park reconstruction line item. In the event the grant is awarded, this resolution provides for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $1,182,638.33.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any conversation? No conversation, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. Your fine. Next bill, please.
Bill 2060. Resolution authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to execute relevant agreements to receive grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation's Automated Red Light Enforcement Program to replace traffic signals at the intersection of Bigelow Boulevard and Bayard Street in the North Oakland Neighborhood and further providing for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $165,000.
Need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any conversation? Ms. Harris.
Director, could you please come to the table?
Morning, Director.
Morning, Director.
Could you please identify yourself for the public as soon as you get a second.
I'm the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Director.
Good morning. Good morning. The question I have, is this the red light program that we were talking about? If someone don't stop, it snaps the pitcher. This is a funding source that comes from existing automated red light enforcement, which currently just exists in Philadelphia. So we are, as is in the 2012 budget, we are looking at what automated red light might mean for Pittsburgh, but we currently don't have that, nor do we have a proposal for automated red light here. Right. I know we discussed it a few years back, and I wasn't sure if this was... This is just a funding source right now. For, for that, in case we decide we're going to do it? No, this is a funding source, so revenues that are collected through the enforcement of red light running in Philadelphia are redistributed, the bulk of them are retained in the City of Philadelphia, a portion of them are redistributed across the Commonwealth through a grant application program. So we applied for some of those funds for the purposes of upgrading the signal, and we were awarded those funds for the signal. So this is to allow us to receive those. Okay, so this has nothing to do with, okay, thank you.
Ms. Strasburger.
While you're up here, I just wanted to thank you for all your work on this intersection. We all know, you know, if you've ever walked through this intersection, very, very close to the University of Pittsburgh, basically on their campus and very well-traveled, it's sort of Pitt's version of Forbes and Morewood in a way, and incredibly dangerous, as many people are turning all at once into many different lanes on a one-way street, so, from a one-way to a one-way in many cases. So incredibly dangerous for pedestrians, it's improved some with the bump outs, this will improve it further, and I'm grateful for your, you and your team's work on this. So thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I want to recognize our Traffic Division for their work doing that.
Any other conversation?
Last bill.
Other conversation, all them favorites, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. Next bill, please.
Bill 2061. Resolution authorizing the Mayor and the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to enter into an agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development Multi-Module Transportation Fund Program. Should the grant be awarded by DCED, to provide funding for Grand View Avenue Project, the grant proposal includes an ask of $1,848,700 with a local match of $792,300 included in the 2020 City of Pittsburgh's capital budget. In the event the grant is awarded, this resolution provides for an agreement in expenditures not to exceed $2,641,000.
Need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Any conversation? No conversation. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay. All right, it takes us to Land Use Economic Development Committee. Ms. Gross is the chair. Good morning, Ms. Gross. Do we have a new paper?
Bill 2027, Resolution Authorizing The Mayor And The Department Of City Planning To Apply For A Grant From The Pennsylvania Department Of Community And Economic Development's Keystone Communities Program To Provide Funding For The Sawmill Run Zoning Study Should The Grant Be Awarded By DCED, We're Authorized To Enter Into An Agreement With DCED. The Grant Proposal Includes An Ask Of $25,000 With A Local Match Of $100,000 To Be Contributed By The City Of Pittsburgh's 2020 Capital Budget. In The Event The Grant Is Awarded, This Resolution Provides For An Agreement And Expenditures Not To Exceed $125,000.
Need a motion, Ms. Gross.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Um, I'm totally supportive, and I, I don't, just wanted to give the council members a chance if they had anything to, to add.
Ms. Coghill.
Yeah, I'll just add, I want to thank Councilwoman Gross for really just catching it in our text file. And I conveyed to the mayor's office anything regarding Sawmill Run Boulevard flooding, I'd like to know about it, and I, I didn't quite know about that. Turns out, it's, it's a good thing, you know, it's for a grant to do a study. I'm not a big fan of studies, but, you know, anything that helped there would be great. And for the people to know that we're doing it, so, you know, just a little miscommunication for holding it, but, uh, thanks for bringing it to my attention. And it's important that I know that when I go to these community meetings and say, hey, you know, what are we doing? It's one of, one small thing, but it's a thing, you know.
Thank you, Ms. Coghill. Ms. Smith?
So, I just want to thank Councilwoman Gross for, last week, for having the communication with Councilman Coghill when working on this with both of us, actually, and then, but I really want to thank Councilman Coghill, too, because he's done a lot in this area in making sure that people are drawing attention to a really serious problem in that area. And the administration for a lot of these grants that we're, we're applying for, including the one just previously for Grandview Avenue, there's a lot of big, significant issues that if we don't receive state and federal dollars, the city cannot possibly maintain our infrastructure, and at the current rate we're going, even with their help, it's gonna be a struggle. So, I just want to thank the administration for making these issues that are priorities for our community and public safety concerns a priority for their administration as well.
Any other conversation? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay. Next bill, please.
Bill 2055, Resolution Authorizing The Mayor And The Director Of The Office Of Management And Budget To Enter Into An Agreement With Community-Based Organizations For Community And Economic Development For Planning Assistance In Various Neighborhoods In The City And Providing Operating Support For These Groups And Provide For The Payment Of The Costs Not To Exceed $700,000.
Motion to approve. Discussion.
Second.
Second, Ms. Gross.
Uh, thank you, I just want to also say that I think it's so critically important that we have these community-based plans that are codified, that are moved forward by our planning department, and we all feel the stress in neighborhoods that don't have codified community plans, and I'm glad to see that we're able to move forward with, we've seen the benefits in Uptown, we've seen the benefits in Homewood, we're seeing the benefits in Hazelwood, and it's important that we continue to move these forward. And again, it's also something that we could be applying, I think, for grant funding for, but it's a little more difficult, so we're always glad to have community partners, so...
Uh, Ms. Rossberger first.
Thank you. Um, I don't, I don't think we need to call anyone to the table if you know the answer, Councilwoman. Is community-based organizations the name of a certain consulting firm?
That wasn't my understanding. If you'd like me to follow up and, and get more information?
I'm just curious if it's, if it means community-based organizations and it's specific organizations, or if it's...
Or if it's RCOs or something like that, I don't know.
Or RCOs, or if it's the name of a consulting group that will be working on these plans. It wasn't clear in the text.
I'm happy to find out.
Thank you.
Is that, is that an LLC, is the question? And we don't think so.
No, it's, it's, no. This is the title of all, this is the ACBO award.
Oh, oh, of course.
This is the ACBO award, so this is the title of all of the organizations. This is the category of all the organizations.
I didn't catch that it was the ACBO, so I apologize.
This is the ACBO.
Yeah, sorry.
This is the ACBO bill.
Agreement with community-based organizations.
This is, this is...
I was, I missed the agreement part of just a community-based organization.
I looked at it.
Apologies, yeah.
I looked at it.
You know, I think it's different. Thank you. It's different than it has appeared before.
Yes, but that's what it is. This is the ACBO.
Thank you.
That our, that our chiefs of staffs all worked on together. Um, I want to thank them for their hard work and their recommendation. I thought it was a very clear, transparent, and cooperative process, so congratulations for all members for this process. Um, um, we have a motion to approve on the table. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay. It takes us to our next committee, which is the Innovation, Performance, And Assets Management Committee. Ms. Rossberger is the chair. We have a new paper.
Bill 2062, Resolution Amending Resolution 158 Authorizing The Mayor And Director Of The Department Of Innovation And Performance To Enter Into An Agreement With Computronics For The Provisional, For The Provision Of A Permitting And License Package At An Additional Cost Not To Exceed $1,480,000 Over The Next Two Years.
I need a motion, Ms. Rossberger.
Motion to approve with discussion.
I need a second. Been probably moving to second, Ms. Rossberger, you have the table.
Um, thank you. Would, uh, would the guests like to introduce themselves and what this project is?
Yes. I am Santiago Garcés. I am the Director Of The Department Of Innovation And Performance.
I am Andrew Hayhurst. I'm the project manager for this particular project.
And I'm Sarah Kinter. I serve as the Assistant Director For Licensing And Administration With PLI.
And we're here to request, uh, to appropriate some funding that had already been budgeted for this year as part of the Computronics project, as well as to raise the not-to-exceed so that we can complete the project next year. Computronics is the computer platform that the city has been using to pursue its one-stop PGH program, to make sure that all permitting and licensing at the city occurs within the same system, which means a more streamlined and easier experience for our residents, being able to see, have visibility over the process, and being able to make submissions online without having them to come back repeatedly to the city. So, we've already completed three out of the four phases of the project. The funding for this year would help us cover the costs of the implementation of the first three phases and some of the construction of Phase Four, and then the not-to-exceed that we would use next year would cover Phase Four, which includes Code Enforcement, Department Of Mobility And Infrastructure, and the Fire Department, too.
Would you mind giving some examples of how multiple departments use Computronics, just to give us and, and people at home a sense of that?
Well, let's, one of their departments start.
Well, thank you, and thank you for asking. Um, so, I, I currently serve over the licensing division. Did you introduce yourself? I did. I'm sorry, I missed that. Assistant Director Of Licensing Administration For PLI, Sarah. Um, and so, my team has been working in the system since November of 2018, starting with the licensing launch, the permitting launch, and the planning module launch was May of this, this past year in 2019. And so, when a customer logs online to the one-stop PGH portal, they see a menu of applications for all of our departments, DCP as well as PLI, soon-to-be DOMI, where they can apply for development applications all in one place, and we're reflecting that with our one-stop counter as well, which has gone through a lot of changes. Um, and, you know, we've had a lot of wins with our new system, merging these applications together, making it easier for customers to apply, also making it available for them to apply online at any time. So, even if our office is closed, people are applying online, which has been great. So, around 30% of our applications are applied for off-hours, uh, so when we're actually closed.
Yeah, and again, from our standpoint, this provides a better experience for residents. So, if you're a homeowner and you're gonna make an improvement in your home, you might need to also request permission to put a dumpster to remove the, the demolition remains. You can do all of that online through the same portal without having to go to DOMI for the occupancy permit, without having to go to PLI separately. Just do it in one, one place.
Yeah, I'll open it up for any other questions from members.
Uh, Ms. Harris, for next.
Yes, uh, this is great, and we've been spending millions of dollars over and over. What I can't understand is, um, we're dealing with real estate here. Why is it not where, you know, we can see, um, and, uh, the departments can see a piece of real estate and what is being done, you know? If it's being torn down and real estate is still selling it, doesn't make any sense at all. These computers have not been able to talk back and forth, and that's old news. I mean, that's things that Pittsburgh Public School has had for over 20 years now, but yet the city of Pittsburgh doesn't have that. Um, I had screens where I could look at anything like that and look into the department of which it is, and I'm wondering why, over the years, and I'm not talking about you personally, this has been before your time, too, but here goes millions of dollars again, but yet, well, you can be able to do licenses, but you still have the problems where the computers are not talking to each other, and the council or mayor's office can't just look online and, you know, into any department, or just look up one piece of, uh, real estate and see what's going on with it.
Yeah, it's like, from, um, th- this system actually is consuming data from the county through, that we're fixing in our GIS department, um, so we're making the computers talk to each other, making sure that the information's flowing back and forth. That's part of why the project has been difficult to implement, because the systems weren't necessarily designed to integrate in the past, and we're starting to make that happen. I know that right now we have BuildingEye and a couple of other tools that expose the information around what's happening, but we want to have a more streamlined sharing of information and maybe even sharing with the, um, with the county assessor's office information around when there's a construction or a demolition, so that they can reflect that in the property assessments in the future. So, um, the good thing about this system is that it's very robust, and it's designed to integrate with some of these other systems, so hopefully by the time that we'll finish the project, the vision that you have of having the systems talk to each other will be complete.
Okay, so, I mean, there are things that, that aren't public, um, and councils should be able to, to see each department when they pull it up. Not that they can change numbers or anything like that, you do understand, you understand what I'm talking about? Um, and over the years, I mean, it's, I mean, it should be old software. What, which software are you talking about with the county?
So, the information that we're receiving is information, uh, GIS information, geographic info, uh, information system, uh, data, which refers to data from the parcels, from the addresses and the ownership of those parcels. Um, and then, we're able to show information around the parts, like what parcels had construction activity, and what was the amount of the construction activity, which is information that's already public.
Okay, but, I mean, it's been years and years, and it would be nice. Will this piece be able to do what I'm asking for?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. So, once you have this in place, I can look up my address and see what I'm doing on it, whether it's being torn down, or, um, what permits might be out on it, things like that, so that there's less work in between trying to find out what's happening with DOMI and real estate and everybody.
All of this data will be fully integrated with BuildingEye, and so you'll be able to look at the parcel level or an address and see every single permit that's been issued or requested. Um, if there's violations on that permit, you'll be, or on that parcel, you'll be able to see it. So, the, the system gives us a open interface to pretty much any system, and BuildingEye is the tool that we're using right now to explode, or expose that information.
Yeah, because even when we sat here at the table, I can't think of the counties' piece that we added on, uh, and we were supposed to be able to go down to a pencil that we bought, and none of that really happened with that, and the city is still paying an awful lot of money for a very, very old system that the county has. So, maybe check into that one, too.
The other good news is that, you know, this system will be managed by innovation and performance. We're gonna have a team in-house that will be able to support it once we are implemented and enabled, and so enhancements will be able to come out of that department in the future.
Okay.
So, we won't be relying on other departments or counties to, to do that.
Okay, thank you.
The other, uh, I saw Ms. Smith.
Well, actually, the answer to my questions about the integration with, uh, BuildingEye. So, I'm good.
Any other conversation? Ms. Coghill.
Hi, Sarah. In this chart right here, this estimated value to applicants, what's that mean?
Um, so, we were trying to show, there is a value to applicants to not having to come downtown.
Parking, such as things like that.
Exactly, and so that's what we, we were trying to show, and there's more than just this. This is just a, a, a quick way of doing it, but, so, just by looking at it, if you're submitting an application online, that eliminates the need for you to come down, park, and spend an hour in line, right? So, we were trying to allocate a value to that.
Loss of work time slash...
Yes, exactly.
Parking slash...
All of that.
Maybe 50 bucks per person or so, at least, over time they come down?
We didn't go that quite generous. We, um, so for each, for applications submitted online, we allocated an hour, savings at $25 per hour, and $10 for transportation costs. So, it's very, very reasonable, um, value saved by the customer.
Yeah, and I can see that. I, although I question the fact we're still putting more money in that, you know, the information process, so it doesn't save us any money, it may save the consumer some money, and certainly the most important thing is the time, you know, to have to come downtown for a little deck that you're building off the side of your house. How is the online, uh, process going as far as, any, anybody have any problems with it?
Um, so, we are in implementation, and of course, it's software, so it's going to be bugs, and we have had a series of updates and integrations to assist. So, there were some pain points, but our staff has been really wonderful, walking people through, um, the process, getting them to apply online, and for those minor alteration permits that you're talking about, windows in kind, decks, repairs to roofs, things of that nature, um, those can usually happen same day over the counter and next day if they apply online. Um, so, they, they don't have to come downtown to get that, and then they can print their permit right from their home, post it, and the inspector comes out.
Go ahead, Sarah.
Um, the investment that we're requesting, the extra money, is precisely because we've been getting feedback from users and then making changes based on their experience, just trying to make it better for the next person that comes by, and, uh, the numbers that you see here are based on a soft rollout, so we haven't really marketed yet and shared with people that the system is live. These numbers have only been, that the online portal for residents has only been live since June, so...
The three months.
And, and you know what my fear is with the technology? That we lose the personal touch, you know, somebody answering the phone. To me, that's the most important thing in any business, no matter how big the business is, no matter how small it is. I fear that we don't have somebody answering the phone, we're expecting everybody to go online and take care of everything through the portals and whatever else is involved with that. And I will tell you, I had somebody apply for a permit, well, not, not apply for a permit. Let me ask you this, the, the, uh, the fee, the city licensing fee that the contractor needs to have, can that be done online?
Yes, you can pay online. Yes, you can pay online.
Okay, so I had my secretary kinda try that online, she got very frustrated and, you know, I said, "Well, I'll just go over there." So I can still walk over there and get my permit, right?
Yeah, the, the vision that the mayor has for a one-stop is that it really is providing whatever is most convenient to you. So if you wanna come downtown, especially once there's the, uh, single counter that you're able to come downtown, if that's your preference, you can go online if that's your preference. It's really accommodating, uh, whatever is most convenient to you.
Yeah, you wanna do it the old-fashioned way, you can still do it the old-fashioned way, right? Without any hiccups. And, you know, when we agreed to purchase 420 Boulevard of the Allies, uh, that was one of my requests to Marla Kennedy, was I said, "You know what, I, I'd love to make sure that somebody's sitting at a desk with a smile on their face, one place for small contractors, one place for skyscrapers or, you know, I feel like there should be two different divisions there because when I'm behind somebody and I'm trying to get a roof permit and somebody's, you know, uh, they pull out blueprints, I feel, uh, it goes another hour and a half, you know, so. I've yet to get in there, in and out smoothly, I could tell you. So, I just fear that we lose that personal touch. I'd love somebody at that desk greeting people, um, you know, and doing it the old-fashioned way. If you want, me personally, that's the way I like to do things. I, I have it set in my mind, I need that permit, I go get it, you know? And, and I'm O for one as far as the, you know, um, applying online goes, but she's not the most skilled at that either, so we'll, uh, we'll see how that goes. But I do think if, once that gets, you know, get, once you get on your feet with the online process, to avoid coming downtown is, is really the golden goose here, so.
Ms. Gross.
Thank you. So we've been hearing a lot about the cost, but it's also true as, as we've had in multiple budget hearings that you've also had, some of the numbers stick in my mind, it was almost like a 5,000% increase in permits in some categories?
No, I don't have those hard numbers in front of me.
I know, not today, but I just wanna kind of set it in context. So what we're looking at in here is the amount, and I'm getting nods from the director, Karis is over there, that, um, it's important to keep in mind, I think, the, the dramatic increase in volume. So while personnel has remained fairly flat in terms of number of people, slightly higher maybe? I'm, I'm thinking back like the last five years since I've been here, so.
We did ask for an increase and received that for our one-stop counter. So we did receive three additional application technicians as part of that intake. But yes, you're absolutely correct that that volume did increase.
Yeah, but the department hasn't doubled or tripled in personnel. And so, we're handling a tremendous amount of greater volume. Obviously, you just go around the city and you see that from people redoing their houses and getting roofs and, you know, all, most of our housing stock is 100 years old, there's always, there are always roofs. There are always roofs, um, sidewalks, there are all these kinds of permits in addition to the very large, um, developments that are obvious to the eye. And so we're struggling to kind of keep up. The hard part, I think, for all of us in representing our constituents is getting the complaints that people are still waiting 12 month, or 12 weeks, 16 weeks. And that was the complaint three years ago, four years ago, and it's still the complaint that we're getting, so. But I really wanna set it in context, we've, we're spending a great deal more on these upfront investments, setting up this new technology. But we really need to hear maybe in this year's budget hearing, kind of like, what is the comparison from 2009 to 2019? Or, or the last five years or 10 years, however we wanna frame it, to say like, this is how many more, you know, applications and permits we've, uh, received and permits we've issued? And we've spent this much more, are we spending more in overhead as a, as an entity or less? I can't tell that, right? And I think that's the right question to ask. And then what is, and what is the return that we're giving to people? Are we doing better or are we not doing better by them? And so we, I think it's just the right question to ask in the, in the budget conversation. Um, and we really wanna see those wait times come down. I know it's really frustrating for people in the neighborhoods, um, at large developments and smalls. So, um, I know we don't have those answers today, but I wanna say like, this is a 25% increase, right? From 5 million to 6.6 million. Um, and so are we, we're really gonna have to ask those questions about like, okay, are we getting our bang for our buck here? It's a lot of bucks, so, we're, we're all kinda fingers crossed, I'm rooting for you.
Thank you.
Any other conversation?
I just wanted to reiterate, I, I'm glad Councilwoman Gross brought it up, the wait time, it's so important. You know, people are wanting to get a job done. I don't know how, and how, really how you operate, Sarah, you know, but somehow, I hope that we can get that to, you know, quickly. And you're really one of the few departments that generates an income, you know, as to, I think you spend much more than you, than it costs, uh, than, than revenue you have coming in, twice as much, I believe, last time I checked. Do you know those numbers? I, I think it's...
No, I don't, I don't know those numbers off the top of my head. But I do know that we have, uh, done better on our reviews and our review times have come down. However, there is complexity to the jobs that require more robust reviews, a lot of back and forth and, you know, those, those things are pain points and we, we certainly understand. But overall, since 2014, those times have come down, but we'll certainly be providing those numbers.
Can you break those out?
Yep, yep, and I think we have some of those numbers from last year, from last budget. Certainly, we will be updating them for the upcoming budget.
Well, as Ms. Gross said, really, that's my biggest complaint is, first of all, I'm scared where the technology's going, that we're gonna lose that personal touch, but on top of that, it's the time, you know, people are waiting to do a job and the contractors lined up and, you know, so.
And I will say, Councilman, uh, we are not getting rid of the one-stop counter, we will have the counter.
Good for you, that's great.
So that personal touch will remain.
I'll be over there this week.
Any other conversation? Seeing no conversation, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed as nay, it takes us to the last committee of the day, which is the Intergovernmental Affairs Committee. Mr. Connors is the chair.
Bill 2029, resolution adopting planned revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for the 201 Arsenal Phase 2 residential land development project located at 135 39th Street.
Need a motion?
Motion to hold two weeks.
Need a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed as nay, before I go around the table, I will have a few announcements. Next Tuesday, October 1st at 1:30, council will hold a cable class public hearing on Bill 2019, 1995, as it relates to sustainable development. And next Wednesday, October 2nd at 2 o'clock, council will hold a ca- a cable cast post agenda discuss, discussion on the Pittsburgh Climate Action Plan chaired by Councilperson Erica Strasburger. All right, uh, motions or resolutions from the members of council? See none, um, we're all, uh, Mr. Lavell?
Motion just to add, um, I, I vote for the bills that I was not here for.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other conversation?
Could I just, uh, say that I know that there's been a lot of discussion about the letter? And I know everybody probably doesn't wanna discuss this right now, but I wanna say that Councilman Lavell just drafted the letter this morning, he said, and so we'll have an opportunity to review it. But as of yet, I know there's been some comments about, uh, some of us not signing or, it's not been available for us to sign or not to sign, so just to clarify for the public.
Any other conversation, Mr. Coghill?
I wanted to comment yesterday in talking about Mr. Lavell's letter, okay? And I made the remark that I, I support Dan. I, and I, my first instinct is always to support my colleague, I gotta tell you. So, uh, after going home, thinking about it, I thought to myself, you know, I, I don't know what else, I, I don't know the facts of everything, you know? And I thought, "Well, I'd like to maybe sit down with the DA and I could talk to Councilwoman Kyl Smith about this." But I wanted to say, what I do know is, I know Stevens Zapala personally, he's a good friend of mine. I've been working with him for years, uh, through the police community, through, uh, ci- you know, city council now. And I feel like it's almost become a bit of a political football. Not, not intended that way from Mr. Lavell, I don't believe, but I think the public now has been using it. And I've seen things posted where there was racial implications on Stevens Zapala and I gotta tell you, I don't think he has a racist bone in his body. And I've, I can say that personally about him. And, um, again, my, my instinct is to support Mr. Lavell and his letter. And he, when, when Mr. Lavell speaks to things, you know, he's not a man of many words. When he says something, it's poignant and it's profound and, you know, I usually buy in. And, but again, until I meet with Mr. Zapala and actually go over all the facts of this, uh, I'm a little hesitant to sign on, just right now.
Any other conversation, Ms. Smith?
Yeah, so I just, to the same, same, uh, comments. I think that, you know, people just don't, they're tired of us playing politics with their lives. And oftentimes, we're doing that. And I think that it's, when I made my comments yesterday, if it's just a letter, then count me out because I don't wanna play politics. I, I don't wanna attack the DA, I don't wanna defend the DA. I wanna make sure that what we're doing is getting real results for people. And I think a lot of us feel that way. And so, um, you know, I think that having a conversation with him would be great. And I did have a brief conversation with him in Mount Washington when he was up at an event and asked about the increased charges. And he just tried to explain some of it to me. I talked to Officer Tiffany Klein-Costa, she tried to explain some of it to me. It's just that, when you see the video, it just defies, you know, all sensibility. And so I just think that, um, yeah, understanding the law is one thing. And I think we don't also won't wanna be governed according to politics and, and ha- or, I'm sorry, um, prosecuted according to political agendas. I think, you know, nobody would want that to ha- start happening. But at the same time, I think it's just, what I think we need to do is, one, this is one avenue. A letter is one avenue, but there's also other things that we should be taking, other measures we should be taking. And stop looking outside and start looking internally. Look in the mirror and see what we can do each individually. And so whether it's a letter to Zapala as one step, but then we're talking with Reverend Burgess about increasing, uh, funding and programming. And, I mean, honestly, I, I think people are just so sick of our idea of what is needed in the communities. I think it'd be really great to hear from the community what they really think would help the community too. And I, and I, I just think that there's a lot to be said and a lot, I, I think the report that came out is the thing that we really should be focusing on and what our role is and how we can change some of this stuff. So, my thing is not to always point the finger, my, my thing is to look in the mirror and say, "What can I do differently? And, and how can I make a difference?" And so I hope that, you know, we don't lose sight of that, you know, people are tired of politics. They, their lives, some people are really struggling and in Pittsburgh, our African-American community is struggling. And people want some significant, um, issues addressed and some significant responses and not political responses all the time. So with that said, I just hope that we remember, we're here to serve the people, not to get ourselves reelected.
Rev?
I would just like to add, you know, I felt it pretty harmless yesterday to support the letter. It's, it seemed natural, okay, let's ask Stevens Zapala. But, uh, again, you know, I feel like the public, not anybody at this table, has taken it to a political level that, you know, I respect the guy, I think he's a good guy. I think, uh, he's done a good job for us. I think he goes by the letter of the law and I think that's all we can ask of him. But, um, you know, certainly bothers me not to support Mr. Lavell's letter, as it bothered me not to support Mr. O'Connor's young bill, I gotta tell you.
So let's not say that you're not supporting it, let's have that conversation, figure out how we can support him and the community.
I mean, as we sit here now.
Any other conversation, Ms. Harris?
Yes, it's my district and, um, uh, I would be happy to support a letter to go over to Stevens Zapala, asking him to go to the highest law that is legal. But not to tell him, you know, to go from a simple assault to an aggravated assault, unless he feels it would be that way. Now, there's not been any bodily harm as of right now noted. And there were no, um, uh, nothing utilized as a weapon. And if you read the law or even talk to one of the police officers to pull it up for you, they'll tell you that, you know, they would only be able to go to a simple assault unless there is bodily harm or, uh, uh, weapon being used. But to say to, you know, Zapala knowing that it's a simple assault, to go to the highest letter of law that he can without telling him what letter of the law to go to, I think would be a very fair letter. And, uh, it wouldn't be telling him, I mean, that's not our job. We don't, we're not into the law, um, that's not what we're using every day. But if you look it up, um, you don't wanna put something down and tell him, "You gotta do this." Because he has to go to the letter of the law in his, in his work. Thank you, and that's what I told, um, uh, Dan yesterday, that I could sign it if it said, "Go to the letter of the law," whatever he can put on there. But no, not to say, you know, put it to, don't tell somebody to go from a simple assault to an aggravated assault unless you know what the difference is. Thank you.
Other conversation, Mr. Lavell?
Just for the record, none of us should pretend to know or even begin to speculate on how harmed or unharmed that young wo- those young women are. Two, women being dragged and beaten is not a council issue specific to a council district. It's a public safety issue that all of us collectively should be concerned about.
And, may I say, I'm very concerned. I did not like seeing that done to anyone, I'm a woman. But, you know, you really need to go get medical assistance if you are harmed in any way. As of right now, that didn't happen.
So, anyone else? I'll, I'll take a little bit, I'll, I'll jump in just a little bit. Last night, um, actually, last night at Home Depot, I ran into Doug Shields, of all people, right? Doug had been my mentor on council, actually, uh, Mr. Cross and both of us, he was both of our mentors on council. And he used to always say, which I, I'm far to say now, that I'm the old man on council, right? I've, I've been here, uh, came in with, Mr. Cross, we came in together, uh, God willing, we'll leave together. But I, um, I've sat here and listened to us do wills of council, to Trump, to foreign officials, and I've never voted against a will of council. It had no teeth in it, it was just a letter that we said that we sent and we all sent it and it was not a lot of discussion. I don't know that I see this any differently, um, sending a letter to, to Zapala to ask him to consider something. We're not asking him to do something illegal, illicit or to betray his oath of office. He'll do what he knows is in, what he believes is in the best interest of the law. I once wanted to be a lawyer, really, I almost went to law school. I loved the law, but the law's not always just, right? It's not always fair. Law has to sometimes catch up to the human condition, right? And, 'cause there were, you know, always laws in our country that were unfair. They were legal, but they were not just. Even today, you know, with public comment, I am, I am troubled by all of this, right? I, I'm troubled by, by the idea that, um, that we're debating whether or not to oppose a, a young woman being grabbed and str- and dragged and punched, that, that we're discussing this. And then, you know, um, someone else guessing their ethnicity is saying other hateful things in public comment. I am not a perfect man at all. I have tried to, for most of my life, share the good news. And so I will say what I believe, even though sometimes even myself, I do not take my own advice. But hate never is right. There's no win- do, hate, hate, hating, hating, mistreating people is always wrong. No matter who does it, no matter what reason they do it, it's always wrong, right? The, the, we, we, we are a country of immigrants, right? The only people who are here were the Native Americans. We all came here by, by ship or a plane or something brought us here, right? Our, our forefathers here, so we really have to focus on what brings us together. And I think, I think, maybe I'm crazy, and I, I wanna take race out of it, I don't think it's race. Two young women by two bigger, two or three stronger men were beaten, dragged and assaulted, for whatever reason. To me, that's wrong. That's wrong no matter who does it. I don't care where they do it at, that, I don't care what council district they do it at, I don't care where in the country they do it at, I'm gonna say that's wrong. I'm going to defend that as wrong. And so my sign-off to the letter, um, is really more of me making a public statement saying, "In the small way that I have a little influence, this was wrong." And, and so, and so, um, that's all. And, and I would caution us, caution us against lea- losing sight and getting caught up in the details of this. I would, I would, I would caution us.
Stop.
Uh, caution us against that. There are moments. I think we're at that moment now, actually, to be honest with you. I believe our city is in, the rep- the rep- I have actually the report here. Where is that? It's right here, right? The, the, this, this... This, this, it's Pittsburgh's inequality across gender, whatever, right here. I was reading it before council, I'll take it back, finish reading it. We're at that moment. This is, this is a, we're at, there are, there are, there's chronos and there's keros. Chronos is chronological time, keros is the right time in Greek. We're at that keros moment, right? We know there's inequality in our city, we know this. And it's not just all gender and race based, right? There's the have, the have-nots. I stand with those people who are hurting. I believe that's right. I believe it's biblical, it's what I've been taught, the least among you, and I believe that as a city, that should be our agenda. I think we should unite around that, we should create a, 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 a understanding, that's what I'll stand for, that we, that we empower the least among us. And, and Ms. Harris kind of alludes to this, but I want to tell you, I, I really don't care, really, my, my first interest is not race. It never has been. My first issue is poverty. That's really my issue, is poverty. And people who are poor, no matter if they are black or white or red or brown, poverty is the single common denominator in this country. If you're poor, you're going to have issues in this country. And so, my fight has been poor, right? It just so happens that percentage-wise, African-Americans are disproportionately poor, their neighborhoods are disproportionately poor, so, you know, I'd also fight for them too. But the idea is poverty. And I'm sure in, in your, in your council district, Ms. Harris, you have poverty there. I'm sure there, you told me how you grew up, and I, and I respect that and, and, and respect how far God has brought you. I think that conversation about how we empower the least among us, right, 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 of which this is simply a subcategory of, is a healthy discussion for us to have. It should be an issue that we can all unite around, right? But in, you know, and, and then we could talk about issues of gender and race in, in a subsection of that. Anyway, talk too long. I would suggest that those of us who feel comfortable will sign the letter that Councilman Lavell writes. For those of you who do not, it does not mean that you are less appalled or bad people, is it's that you have other concerns, which is okay too. But there are moments that we can unite, and I'm going to suggest over the next few months, that we should, as a council and as a city, we should unite around the inequity and the, the poverty and hopelessness that are in pockets of our city, that is tangible, you can see it, you can feel it. That should be the agenda of our city, is to join with this mayor to make Pittsburgh the most livable city for everyone, for immigrants, for African-Americans, for Latinos, for gay and lesbian, ALGPH, LG, the alphabet, I don't say all the alphabets right, because they change, right? For, 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 for rich, for poor, for everybody. That should be our mission, we should unite behind that. Anyway, so with that, let's go home in a minute. Ms. Harris?
Yes, and I agree with everything that you said, and yes, I have poverty in my district, and yes, I'm a woman, and I cared or I wouldn't have been down there. Have I talked to them individually? No. And to say to go to the highest extent of the law, whatever that might be, is fair. But we cannot tell them what laws to go by because none of us, unless you look up what the laws are, can, can say, do this, do this, do this. Now, because we don't know, we need to say, go to the highest extent of the law, tell them how terribly that we feel by seeing that video, videos, how we feel, do I think at that time or even now, those women should seek medical help if they're harmed? Because that would also go into the highest point by law that they could go by. But you cannot tell them what laws, and I said that yesterday, go to the highest extent they can go, but don't tell them what exactly to do. And-
I don't, I don't want to get into them being hurt because, you know, I spent a long time in mental health. And I don't know, but I think if I was dragged in public by someone twice my size, beaten in public, being scared and not, feeling powerless and worthless, I, I think despite the physical pains, that would cause me some problems. And I think that it would cause me some problems more than the next day and the next week and the next month. I, I think that, that, I mean, I'm not, you can never conjecture on someone's, someone's health, but, you know, when you go into the military, when you see any combat, when you come home, they bring, they give you lots of counseling support because they say, you, even if you don't see combat, when they take you to a combat zone, right? They bring you back and say, okay, since you're in a combat zone, here's, here's all the, here's the resource you need. Well, if you're poor, I'm not saying they're poor, I don't know, but if you're African-American and you're a female and you're living in a situation that is sometimes hostile to you and in a public setting, you're already, if you're a woman, you know, women are, women live in a culture of fear in this, this country, we don't talk about it, I talk about it in my class, I don't talk about here, you know, but women, you know, women are assaulted, women are, are beaten, women are, are, I mean, that's why we brought the marital lethality assessment, women are mistreated in our culture. You know, guys, catcall them and call them out their names, and almost every woman has uncomfortable interactions with men. And then to be beaten in public, with, and not only be beaten, now, it's been shown to millions of people, it's, it's, it's viral, right? To me, the after, the after, I, I don't want to talk about this, but the aftermath of that is much worse than what actually happened to them. And, and I think it's going to be with them long time, long, I don't know that, I'm only conjecture, I am conjecturing, but so our prayers are with them. I'm simply saying, let's focus on what we can agree on-
Right.
-and what brings us together than focusing on our differences.
Focus on our commonalities.
Focus on our commonalities. So, let's, let's, let's go home. Is there, I need a mo, we're all here today, I need a motion-
I just want to make clear, you're going to schedule a meeting with the DA so we can all have an opportunity to talk. Okay, thank you.
Is there a motion, is, is there a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting?
Some of it.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We're adjourned.